Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Depending on how you define it, this is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting were posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. And can we confirm Superintendent Wimmer that this was -- this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's rise, please, for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So we've come to the point where we will review and approve this agenda. I would make a motion that we change the agenda slightly, that we ask that the superintendent's report, which is Item 7A on the agenda, that we would deal with that next after this approval. So we would change that to 1D. So again, the superintendent's report, I would move that the superintendent's report be changed to Item 1D on the agenda.
Second.
Motion in second to change the agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Great. The motion carries, which then takes us immediately to the superintendent's report. And allow me, first of all, to welcome to the district Jennifer Wimmer. We are excited to have you as our superintendent. And just a little bit of background, Jen, you were the superintendent of the Maple Dale Indian Hill School District, that's a mouthful, sorry, in Fox Point for six years, but your experience goes way, way farther and deeper than that. I'd just like to turn it over to you for a few words, and again, extend the district's welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate being able to start a meeting with an introduction, as it is my first official meeting. I got to be in the audience before. As you talked, I started my education career as a middle school teacher. I taught sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, specialized in core content as well as special education. I then became an administrator by serving as an associate principal at the middle school level. I was an elementary principal. I then moved to Waukesha, where I have experience as a Director of Curriculum Instruction, Standards, and Assessment. A little bit larger there, 26 schools, 14,000 students. Became an Assistant Superintendent. I oversaw all of student services, as well as parts of enrollment, transportation, et cetera. And then, most recently, as you said, a smaller K-8 system. We were the partner school to Nicolay as our high school. So again, very different, but I think the background of kind of participating in lots of different diverse departments and work across systems, as well as a smaller one, where you really have to be all hands on deck and be a utility player, has really helped me to get to this point in my career. So that's a little bit about me, who I am as a person. I couldn't be more excited to join the West Bend School District. When you look at our community, all the amazing things that we have students doing, our amazing staff, I'm really excited to join. I've been looking for a place here, so until then, we'll be commuting, but I can't wait to get involved in our community. It's hampered a little bit by different clubs and organizations not being able to meet right now. So if you're a community leader, if you've got something going on, please reach out. I have a district email. I'm on their website. I really am looking to engage with citizens, students, our staff, so please just feel free to reach out at any time. So as soon as we can kind of be more prominent in in-person, face-to-face opportunities, I really welcome that and look forward to it. I can imagine you're wondering what we've been up to. This has been my first week on the job, so it's an exciting opportunity, but one of the things that I focused on first is building relationships. So I've been meeting with all our various school leaders, our community leaders, some of our representatives, different department heads, you know, in various organizations. Our civic organizations have been reaching out, so I can get connected and invited to their meetings. I've been a guest on a radio show. I've had some newspaper articles that I've gotten to participate in. So all of those things that you would think of. But I think the biggest thing that's consumed most of our time, as you can imagine, is what schools will look like and how we can envision them in which they're safe for our students and our staff and our community, because we have thousands of students in our schools, and we in turn influence the health and wellness of our community. So in this period, I think we'll be over-communicating right now, just as things change. We want to keep our families informed, so right now, even tonight, a little bit further on the agenda, we'll talk about the different instructional options, because we know families are unique, our community is unique. We might have face-to-face not be available or the best decision for a student or their family member. So we wanted to create some instructional options that take us from face-to-face all the way to full virtual, but knowing that full virtual looks very different than what we would call emergency distance learning that everyone experienced last spring. You know, that was kind of a flip within 48 hours. This is some really intentional planning. Laura Jackson, who is our Director of Teaching and Learning Assistant Superintendent, who oversees all those components, has a plan that makes it more robust than I think kids had before. But again, our hats off to our staff, our families, our students for their efforts last spring. So we'll offer that whole range. We've been working with not only our district nurse, who's right in front of me, but also our community health partners. We've got lots of guidance coming at us from the state, from the nation. We're studying schools who have reopened in other states and other nations as we navigate. And we just are launching our surveys for our families next week, and there'll be definitive questions on there. You know, what are your thoughts and feelings about return? Are you going to be opting into transportation so that maybe we have to do some routing or scheduling to get kids to school safety? What are your thoughts and opinions on the different safety precautions? Masks, social distancing in schools, all of those things. So we'll get opinions from families. One thing that we're bringing into that maybe has been absent thus far, and again, I've been here for one week, so we're kind of building it quickly, so I apologize, but is student voice and how we can engage our students in planning. No one knows their school day better than them, inside and out, so we're looking towards avenues of how we can do direct surveys to students, host some meetings, do some virtual sessions where we're understanding their needs. We have a planning, pretty robust, it's 40-plus members, that will be meeting this week from our staff, so that we can engage them in planning and where their thoughts, I'm sure, like everyone, they have thoughts and fears and opinions, and we just need to cultivate all of that so that we can build a stronger plan together. I think students will think of things that we didn't think of, teachers will think of things that we didn't, your front office staff will start conceptualizing, well, what does even coming in during the day look like? And then moving that to become a more site-specific plan, because there's nuances to each school. So what are some of those things we need to put in place? And then we'll work with school teams and have some site-level meetings for our families, for our students. But I would anticipate it's going to be a lot of convening conversations, surveying, and connecting with people so that they can provide input as we figure out those pieces. So again, we won't have a definitive kind of, here's our articulated plan, this is exactly what school is going to look like, until probably that first week in August, after our initial survey window, our conversations with our community, families, students, and staff members, and then put together a draft for us to really look at and provide feedback another round. I know there'll be some surveys going out to families, so I would urge you to watch for those. We intend to launch the 20th, 21st. We'll send you multiple communications. If we see that you didn't respond, we'll make sure and re-alert you. And again, know that even what you're feeling right now as a family, like, here's what I'm thinking right now, you can still change that. There'll be options that are flexible, because something might change, and you might have a different opinion come August, when we get closer to that time. So again, just reinforcing, reach out to me. I'm here. I've got an email. I look forward to getting connected. If you have thoughts and opinions, we'll seek ways for you to engage and provide those, so that again, we're building a robust plan that meets needs, but is focused on keeping everyone health, healthy and safe, so that we can continue to stay open. That's my week in a nutshell.
Any questions from the board, for the superintendent? It sounds like it's been a busy week.
Yes, it has.
And I can attest, I know you dug into the issues not just on day one, but even before that, so thank you for hitting the ground running. Appreciate it.
Well, and the thanks really goes to the administrative team, the different staff groups, and our previous superintendent, Don Krikergard. We had a really nice transition in that he and I, as soon as I was named, began meeting every single week to talk about kind of where things were at, the team here, like I said, Laura, whether it was kind of the teaching and learning, Andy looking at the budget and kind of projecting that team's been doing heavy lifting this whole time, and we're just pulling all those pieces together. So my thanks really go out to our staff, our community, and their flexibility and willingness to share and build good plans for going forward. So I appreciate that.
Other questions?
We were at a graduation, and between --
That was -- yes.
And between the superintendent was also at two graduations this weekend, and received great feedback from students, parents that were there, so.
Yeah, so we were able to, you know, it's funny, as we're accelerating plans for the future, we finally got to give students and families that in-person. It looked a lot different, but it was very much appreciated. We've already been fielding feedback of, hey, this was really nice, we should think about outside every year, and what could that opportunity look like? So they're already puzzling around that and thinking about it. I know that there's graduation committees at the high schools, so I look forward to working with students for their future graduation plans as well. But it was wonderful to have a connection. Like I said, we've been kind of isolating, so to see students and staff and families was wonderful.
Brought some very good weather.
Yes.
That's helpful, too.
A lot of fingers crossed, leading into that.
And thanks to Kurt and to Paul for being our assigned representatives at the graduation. I echo your comments. It's great that we could do something for the community. So even though it wasn't a normal graduation, I think this is a group of students that'll be able to say, hey, I got to do something unusual. I got to graduate on the field, so. Thanks for turning that into a positive experience. All right. Okay. So that we've come to the public participation portion. So I have three comment cards, three individuals who wish to address the board. If there are any other comment cards, please feel free to bring them forward at this time, otherwise, in the meantime, I will read our information here about Board Policy 187. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. I summarized the policy at this time. The copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name, address, and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. Excuse me. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response. So as I indicated before, I have three comment cards, and I'm going to call them in the order that I received them. And the first one is from Cameron Polley. Cameron, please step up to the podium, and if you could give us again your name, your address, and your relationship to the district.
Is that on?
Let's see, is there a little green light there?
It's not.
Okay.
My name is Cameron Polley. My address is 730 Summit Drive, and I'm a student who is going into my senior year at West Bend West. So I'm going to get straight to the point. I believe that the West Bend School District should require masks when we return to school this fall. There are a lot of problems with us going back to the classroom without proper precautions. If we go back, how long until school is shut down again from a spike in cases? I can speak for many of my friends, as well as myself, when I say that distance learning created an environment that was not good for learning. It changed the purpose of doing work from learning to just getting it done. This, coupled with the mental health issues many students faced from a lack of social interaction, meant that in distance learning, many students didn't actually learn. How many lunch ladies, teachers, and students will we have to lose before we learn our lesson? In my opinion, it should be zero. Wearing masks is the easiest way to stop this loss of life. What kind of adults would your district be educating if we sent the message that if you are inconvenienced, you can disregard the safety of those around you? Do you want West Bend School District to be just another district where we lose potentially hundreds of lives among students, teachers, and their family members? Or do you want West Bend School Districts to raise a generation of leaders who aren't afraid to do what's right? A generation of people who truly care for those around them? Thank you.
Cameron, thank you for that. The second participant comment card I have is from Jason Penterman. None? All right. Jason will pass. The third is Tanya Lore.
Hi, my name is Tanya Lore, and I live at 3659 Cedar Creek Court Jackson. I am a social studies teacher at West Bend West High School, and I am speaking tonight in my role as President of the West Bend Education Association. The WBA recognizes the extremely difficult, time-consuming decisions the board and district must make in upcoming weeks as we face the question of what our schools will look like this fall. We urge you to recognize the importance of having teachers chosen by their peers at the decision-making table, as the choices that will be made are literally life and death decisions for our staff. Our teachers are at high risk of contracting COVID-19, as our job puts us in contact with tens to hundreds of students each day. The district's current choice not to mask these students makes this contact even riskier. Furthermore, approximately 32% of our teachers are over the age of 40, putting them at higher risk of complications or death due to the virus. Numerous others suffer from heart, lung, kidney, and other diseases, which are high-risk categories as well. Many of our teachers go home to spouses and children who are at risk. Coming to work means putting their loved ones in danger each day. Many downplay the risk, calling the 1% to 2% death rate not that bad. Unfortunately, this is misleading, as it implies the only options are to die from the virus or make a full recovery. But 15% to 20% of those who survive COVID-19 are still victim to long-term heart, lung, or neurological damage. Assuming just a 30% infection rate for teachers in our district, that's two dead, and 20% to 27 with permanent damage. This is our long-term health and lives at stake. We deserve a place at the decision-making table, and to choose who sits in that place. Thank you for your time and for your dedication to our students and staff.
Tanya, thank you for your comments. All right. That's the last card that I have, and so we will move on to the next item on our agenda, then, which is the consent agenda. So we have a number of items on our consent agenda. We have minutes from special board meetings and executive sessions, June 15, February 3, February 24, April 8, April 9, April 15, dispersments posted to July 13, 2020, revenues and expenses in the aggregate, July 2019 through May 2020. We have a section for retirements, but I don't think there were any retirements this time around, ratification of contracts, and resignation. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion in second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. All right. We're on to the action items on our agenda. First one is school nutrition meal prices, and Mr. Andy Sarno will be guiding us through that. Andy?
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Wimmer, thank you so much for having me. When I think of operational services and all the different things that are going on kind of in the background, quite often, when we're doing them appropriately and whatnot, often people tend to forget that we're there. But one of the things that, that's not necessarily the case, is the meals, the breakfasts, the lunches, all of those different nutritional and just a full belly. And we serve thousands of meals per day. We have a fairly decent participation rate, and one of the things that we are required to do statutorily is set those meal rates on an annual basis, have you act on that, even if it's keeping the same dollar amounts as in the previous year. But bringing that forward for your consideration this evening as a recommendation to continue the same meal prices that we had last year during the 2019-20 school year. There is a waiver. This is governed by a 2010 Act of Legislation governed by the USDA. We do meet the criteria acting as a waiver that allows us to keep the meal prices the same, and it would be the recommendation of both Abby Padilla, our Nutritional Services Director, as well as myself to do that, to maintain the same rate. There's a survey done on 57 neighboring districts, districts across the state. It's a consortium, and there's only three districts that have reported so far that are going to be changing their meal prices at all. Additionally, we did a survey closer to us, all of our neighboring school districts, and none of the neighboring school districts are, A, changing their meal prices, and B, we're all within about a nickel of each other. So that's a consideration, and what that's going to require is just to make sure that we're maintaining a fiscal responsibility with these dollars, that we're watching things. And that sound too cliche, because I think this is going to be the approach of many different departments, whether it's the students' instruction, or technology, or the meals, but flexibility creatively and responsibly. So as we keep those three words in mind, as we begin educating students again, as they prepare for coming into our cafeterias where we're going to be serving them, what we're going to be serving them, we need to make sure that we're being flexible, creative, and responsive to that, to make sure that they're being fiscally responsible, yet deserving the nutrition that's needed.
Andy, during the 1920 school year, did we make money with our meal program, or did we break even, or did we lose money with our meal program?
Yeah, there's still claims that are in process that will get booked back to last fiscal year. Budgetarily, as best as we can tell, they did run a little bit of a deficit. And why that is, is because we did make a decision as an organization. You acted on that to continue paying all of those team members, the nutritional team members. So it could be upwards of $200,000 deficit as a worst-case scenario. I did include that as a budget transfer from our general fund into Fund 50, which is for nutritional services. But if we had a typical year and were able to function in a reasonable way, Abby's reassured me that with these prices, we should be able to operate on a net-neutral, no profit, not necessarily any profit nor loss. Thanks.
Other questions on this item?
I'll move to accept the 2020-2021 meal prices as a continuation of the previously approved 2019-2020 rates.
Second, then.
Motion in second to accept the meal prices as continuation of the previously approved rates. Any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. The motion carries. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it. All right. And then the next item on our agenda is the, let me make sure I have this right, the Annual Declaration and Parent Notice of the District's Student Academic Standards for the 2020-2021 school year. Laura, it was just long enough of an item to allow you to come to the podium.
Yes.
Thank you.
The timing was well done. Each year, in the, at the first board meeting of the school year, which is July, the board is asked to approve the parental notice of the standards that will be in place during the next school year for our students. In West Bend, we have, in the recent past, adopted new social studies standards and new science standards. We take the standards from the Department of Public Instruction, bring them to the board for approval, and we work with those in our classrooms and in our curriculum development. The standards from the state, we generally identify as the floor, not the ceiling, but they're a great foundation for us. The state this year is in a, we're in a kind of a unique situation, because recently, they released the, some new English Language Arts standards, some new personal finance standards, and some new physical education standards. And so the state as a whole will be in transition to those. We will also begin that transition. So on the documents that we have, we've listed both standards. We still have our curriculum aligned to the current, or to the former Wisconsin standards. Those are no longer on the DPI website, but we have them PDF-linked to this document. We will be exploring those standards during the course of the year, and as we work on our units of study, which you heard about recently for literacy, we will be looking at both the current and the new Wisconsin standards, and utilizing both of those as we examine and develop those units of study. So the Wisconsin standards are a foundation for us to work from, and then we build off of that. Interestingly enough, we, with the recent creation of new standards throughout the whole state, parents, community members had the opportunity to attend public forums on the new standards. They identify them, put them out for public review, take in comments. So some of these were originally scheduled to be released in the early spring, and that was delayed after the recent public comments. They spent some time revising the standards and going over them again, so that's why they were just released this summer for the ELA ones and others. So it's an interesting process. The public has the opportunity for input into the state standards, and then, as we go through and develop our curriculum, we base it on those. Are there any questions about the parental notice?
So Laura, you talk about Wisconsin standards as the foundation, the floor, not the ceiling for what we expect here in West Bend. Color that a little bit more for me, looking at the formal announcement I see under ELA and mathematics, a reference to Common Core. And we don't hear a whole lot about Common Core these days, but just kind of tear that out for me in terms of the thing that everybody likes to hate and so forth, compared to what are the expectations we have of our students here?
So originally, when the Common Core standards were developed, that was in, around '07 to '11, and those standards were developed as a result of the governors, National Governors' Convention, and the governors coming together. They, then, Wisconsin redid their state standards following that. So originally, the Common Core had come in and were referenced in the Wisconsin standards, and the Wisconsin standards were aligned, not identical to. And so that's why that reference was there. The new standards, Wisconsin has, there's no new national standards. We have revised ours.
So in terms of rigor and depth, locally, we go much further than what Common Core dictates, if you will.
Right. So we identify, yeah, because that identification of these standards are our floor and a base for us to build off of.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Well, hearing none, I move to approve the parental notice of academic standards for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the parental notice of academic standards for the upcoming school year. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. The motion carries. Thank you very much, Laura. Which takes us right to another topic that you'll be presenting, virtual program vendor. Please take it away.
Thank you. So if you, I'm going to review a little bit of some things we've discussed at recent meetings. About this time last year, we explored the idea of expanding our WOBOLA program, which was a virtual program for students in grades seven through 12. Much of the students, many of the students, almost all of the students accessing that program were in grades nine through 12. And we had at around this time been reviewing what our families were searching for, and had decided that we were going to expand the program to include kindergarten through sixth grade, so it would be a K-12 option for our families. We identified that in our annual notice to parents of educational options that were required to put out in December, and then, moving forward, we were beginning the planning process, and then we all went to emergency distance learning. And so we are here today with, to talk about the vendor that we would be looking for the board's approval of to utilize for our virtual partner, K-12. Now, we have students who have been working Now, we have students who have been working with Wisconsin Virtual Schools in, through the WOBOLA program that we had, and some students may want to continue with that. So for example, if I was a high school senior and I had taken four or five classes every year through Wisconsin Virtual Schools, I probably want to finish off with that one. So this will be an option for our students. Some might continue if they were already WBS utilizing that resource. So it is an option for students who are already enrolled in our schools, and it is available now, K-12. With the change to K-12, we shifted the name to West Bend Virtual Academy. That way, we weren't going to confuse it with the former program. It was going to remain a new, named a new entity in that. The, so this, with us switching vendors, utilizing this vendor for most of our students, we expand to, for the program, K-12. And it is a true partnership. So we would be partnering with Edmentum for the curriculum for this program. It will give students an opportunity to take both core classes and elective classes virtually if they so chose. And the, it requires some partnerships between the school district and Edmentum, with the school district, Edmentum, and our families of students who would be accessing the program. The parent and the local education guide will work very closely together to enroll students in the program and to monitor their success. The at-home mentor is essential for student success in the program. And so what does that at-home mentor do? Well, it's different based on the age of the student. As you can imagine, a kindergarten child is going to need much more guidance from that at-home mentor in logging in and identifying what the daily schedule is and turning assignments in. That eighth grader, that tenth grader, even that fifth grader will be a little more independent in their program than those, or youngest, excuse me, the youngest of our students. Regardless, the at-home mentor is a partner with the district in making sure that the student is attending, accessing, and completing lessons, and that the student is, if they're struggling, that they're accessing the resources and reaching out for additional supports. It is one option. So as we go through and explain the option further to our families, we will have some parent meetings coming up where we'll talk specifically about the Edmentum partnership and what school would look like for the students who choose to engage in the virtual program. We will, parents will register their child at their neighborhood school, their normal attendance area school, and then access the Virtual Academy through their neighborhood school. We will have partnership agreements so that parents and guardians really understand how essential they are to the success of their student through this program. At any time, if you have questions, don't hesitate to ask. So the, as I said, the school-to-family partnership is really, really important. We ask that the parents and, or guardian, whoever the parent has selected as the at-home mentor, review every day the student's schedule, particularly at the elementary level. At the high school level, maybe they're sitting down with them each week to look at the family's schedule and look at the student's schedule to plan out when the student's going to complete assignments and participate in the lessons. The partnership requires that the parent also follow up with that local education guide. When the guide is sending out questions, notifications, the parent is engaging, parents will want to participate in that class selection. They'll have questions about courses, they'll reach back out to that local education guide. The Virtual Academy will provide 24-hour access to the courses on the computer, the tablet. But again, students cannot be in class more than 10 hours a day in a virtual school. That's a rule that we have in the state of Wisconsin. So while there is 24-hour access, you can't be on it 24 hours or engaged in the school for 24 hours. We, the, through West Bend Virtual Academy and our partnership with Edmentum, they will have access to a virtual teacher. It may not be their classroom teacher, but a virtual teacher until about 8:00 PM, well, it's scheduled until 8:00 PM Central Time, where they would be able to shoot out a question and get some support from a virtual teacher. Again, it may not be their teacher, but it would be a teacher that they'd be able to access. The student and parent success zones are, each have videos that walk you through how to log into a course, how to access some of the differentiation options within the system. And there, those again, are accessible to students and families 24/7. So the, it, the virtual opportunity just allows some flexibility for families. It also allows them to have a public school education at home.
Laura, quickly, I'm sorry, just for people who might be listening at home, can you, I think sometimes people get a little confused. So this is not your West Bend teacher. So if I have Mrs. Smith at McLean for fourth grade, I have no idea what we have in fourth grade, but using this as an example. If I decide as a parent that I'm going to send my child to this virtual option, I'm not getting Mrs. Smith at McLean. I just want to make sure everyone understands that, because I think there might be some confusion there. So, you know, last year, or in spring, when we did the emergency distance learning, look at me, got it right? That was Mrs. Smith. But this is, this could be Mr. Jones in Texas, potentially. So I, I just want to make sure that everyone understands. This is not the same thing. This is a completely different option. But you are, you do not necessarily have a local teacher. This person could be from somewhere else in the United States, teaching or wherever, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Very different than the emergency distance learning that we quickly put into place. And however, all of the teachers will have a Wisconsin license. So they will meet our state's licensing guidelines. Now, if we, if we were to have 300 students enroll, and 100 of those are in fourth grade, we probably will have one of our fourth-grade teachers teach that class. And that's different than if we have 100 students spread out over all 13 grade levels and all 11 schools.
Right, but that's a very specialized, obviously, situation. And we wouldn't know what that would be until after people have registered or, or made their decision. So I just, I wanted to just make sure that people understood. It's a completely different program. Nothing like what we did in spring. This is a completely different program. So I think I've hammered that one home.
So with this vendor, then we do have the option, if we get 15 kids in fourth grade enrolled, to have our own instructor teach the course. We just don't know until registration is closed.
Until we have the actual registrations.
Sure.
And with that option, we see the pricing at the very end of my presentation. But if that were to be the case, it actually reduces the cost of the program.
So just to clarify, this is driven by the number of students that register for it, not driven by the number of West Bend teachers who would like to teach virtually?
That's correct.
Although they will be given the opportunity if enough students enroll in it?
Correct. And we will notify all staff of the process at later this month. After we have some of our initial enrollments in, we'll notify all staff at the same time of what that process would be.
Just, I'm sorry, timing-wise, I understand for students, summer doesn't seem long enough, but, you know, for, for us, it seems very short, as we're planning. So when we're doing this, give us, and maybe this is for Superintendent Wimmer to also weigh in, if we had 24 students who decided of the fourth grade, hey, I want to go virtual, that would actually reduce a class size then at a district, at a school, a local school, correct?
Yeah, if it was, particularly if it was housed at a school, or 20, if it was 30, we might look at combining, right, and pulling from one school. We'd look at, none of our class sizes are so across the board at the absolute limit. So we have some opportunity that if there were 24, we would have that as an option. We'll monitor all of those, all of the numbers, the student numbers, the enrollment numbers at each site, as well as across the system, so that should we be able to extend the opportunity to one of our teachers to be the, the teacher in Edmentum, we would be able to do that.
I'm just saying, will we have enough time, though, from the time the parents have these informational sessions? Like, it just seems like that timing is very short for you and others to make some of those decisions, as far as, I, I'm totally pulling this, you know, out of the air. But if all of a sudden, we have a whole reduction at McLean of, of 40 students, because they all want to go virtual, obviously, we're going to reduce some classes then at McLean. So will we have enough time then to, you know, process all of that?
So in our partnership with Edmentum, it doesn't, we would be able to get a teacher on board. If we, our process here of identifying whom that would be would be the slowest part of the, the cycle.
And Laura, I'm assuming that despite the proposed change in the vendor, the philosophy that we talked about last month would be the same in that this isn't something you slot into partway through the semester, because suddenly, I want my child working from home because of an outbreak at the high school. This, this is a commitment for the whole semester, for at least a class, whatever the class is that you're, you're signing up for.
If you think of it like, would you move your child to a new district multiple times during the semester? You would not do that typically, unless you had to for some reason. And we would not encourage moving back and forth and back and forth, because you're going into two different classes. And while a parallel curriculum, they're not identical.
So math at the high school versus math here, you know, freshman math, yes, same, same standards again, but very different curricula and how you get there. So I can't leave that one Friday and pick up on Monday without missing a beat in, in the different venue.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
However, if someone started at the brick-and-mortar school, and then a couple months in, decided that I don't feel safe, I mean, I hate to say it, but, you know, there are, might be some kids that, that they've just, it's too close, or, you know, for whatever reason. Like you, like your answer to Mr. Fisher, you, some kids do change schools or districts in the middle of the year, and at that point, transitioning to the Virtual Academy, that would still be an option?
We'd look at it on a case-by-case basis. And sitting down with that, that family, the counselor, the principal, because it may be that there's a different hybrid option of remaining with their current teachers in a different format, might work.
Okay.
And so that would really be on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, yeah, I understand the not fluid back and forth, back and forth, but, you know.
Yeah, we would want to sit down and really have that conversation, because ultimately, if it was the absolute best thing for that child, we, we, I, I would not want to say, I would want to allow that.
Yes, okay, thank you.
So Edmentum has been recognized by some, by our International Society of Technology Education, which is ISTI, by the International Association for K-12 Online Learning through Quality Matters, which is a United States annual report on effective instruction and, well, just on the quality of our schools in general, not just effective. And then Cognia. So Cognia does evaluations and accreditations. And so they are a nonprofit organization that will evaluate, do a program evaluation. And they have done program evaluations of Edmentum and the curriculum of both the elementary and the high school programs. So the, through Edmentum, we would be accessing what's called EdOptions Academy. EdOptions Academy is broken down into three different areas. One of them is for the elementary student, and that is called Calvert Learning. It's part of EdOptions and a part of EdOptions Academy. So Calvert Learning provides the full four core areas, English, math, science, and social studies, along with art, music, and physical education for the elementary student. Within Edmentum, they make the break at sixth grade, which is very common in education, that middle school is six through eight. It also happens to be where our standards typically break. They typically break our K-5 standards, and then six, eight standards, and nine, 12 standards. So the core curriculum and college readiness, career and technical education starts in the middle school with some options for students. They have more options in the seventh and eighth grade than they do in the sixth grade, but there are options for students to access some career and tech ed courses, like we have at Badger with our Project Lead the Way and our App Creator courses. Then at the high school, there's a full array of, a full array of elective courses, as well as core courses. The last one, which is called Workforce Preparation, sometimes students are really, really struggling to complete school and really struggling to stay in school. And so sometimes we look for options for our seniors that are very unique and different options. So you've, we've talked about GPS program before, the GEDO2 program. There are some options through Edmentum that are different than those two, but would be another opportunity for students who are looking for a different pathway to graduation.
Can I?
Go ahead, Toni.
Okay, thanks. So is this where we talk about the blended option? That where someone could do core classes, okay?
I think I have that a little later on, but we can talk about it here.
Okay, if, are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't want to interrupt the flow of your, flow of your presentation, which is very good, by the way. One of the things I really like about this program is the fact that it does provide options for students. They, for example, could take, choose to take their core classes at home, and then come to the brick-and-mortar school for arts or athletics. Or also, if a student is, wants to be at the brick-and-mortar school all the time, could supplement specialty electives at the Virtual Academy. So I, I've, I think this provides a lot of options, and we're very fortunate that you started this pre-COVID. So the timing is, is excellent. I think we're ahead of a lot of districts, actually, being able to offer something like this.
And I think my question is largely covered, but I'll ask, I'll ask it anyway. When we look at, it's, it looks like a pretty broad offering of, of subjects and electives. Would you classify them as just as broad as we have, broader, or not as broad?
I, they definitely have options that we do not have. So within the career fields, I have some highlighted later on. They have some military studies. They have, I just picked a few from their course booklet that are different from what we have. They have different social studies that are like Native American Studies, African-American Studies, Women's Studies. They have sports and, sports and exercise marketing, I believe is, is what it's called. So they have parallel classes, like some of our business classes, but then they go into other areas of business that we don't have. They have some of the same programs for computers, and then they go deeper into coding and some options. So students who are taking our computer-focused classes might find something different here after they've accessed all of, that we have to offer too. So the K, the curriculum that, that is part of Calvert and part of the high school program, so all of EdOptions, is really grounded in sound research on how people learn. The visual up here is the book, How People Learn, The Mind, The Brain, Experience, and School. And it really was foundational research, and it's been re-done, re-released with some new information, and they have been right on top of that, utilizing that in the instructional framework that they've designed for the program. So it's project-based, and that's how the program is designed to be engaging, minds on for students. And throughout the elementary, they use a consistent framework. So it's for that at-home mentor, for that student. It's color-coded, as well as with consistent labels, so that they know what type of assignments they're accessing and how, what, what they're expected to do with that. What they're expected to do with that. The 612 curriculum is constructivist in nature, so there is common learning and then some inquiry-based experiences that the students have. Within the LMS, the Learning Management System, that will be used by the students in the West Bend Virtual Academy, the Edmentum staff has vetted all of the content and curated the content. So when they're doing inquiry-based and going out to do research, they're doing that within the guided inquiry and the LMS. So that's one other way that they keep the students safe online. The courseware is designed, again, to meet the standards, to be flexible and adaptable for students, to be engaging. So this slide highlights some of the ways that it's adaptable for students. So, for example, in mathematics class, the students could access guided notes that, in addition to the instruction, provide another walkthrough, provide illustrated examples of how the angle is calculated or whatever the topic is. It is offered in many languages, so students can select a translation of the curriculum, and the information on slides and other assignments and things can be read out loud to the students if they so chose. So from... Go ahead. Did you have a question? Okay. I thought I saw... So families can expect to be able to access the learning from anywhere regardless of the tool, so from a phone, from a tablet, from a computer, from a Chromebook. It works with our Chromebooks in District. They'll be able to work closely with state-certified teachers, whether those are Ed Options Academy teachers or whether they are West Bend teachers. Until the enrollment, as Ms. Justman pointed out, until we know the enrollment, we won't know for sure, but we're going to say we're starting with Edmentum teachers. They know they'll be engaged in hands-on, in minds-on activities, and they are designed to meet the needs of the diverse learners. So there are coursework and other options available for students who are struggling, who might be below grade level, who might have a special education designation. And we'll look at that on a case-by-case basis for our students with IEPs if this is the right program for them. This slide that is on display right now just highlights some of those unique opportunities that are part of this Virtual Academy that are not part of our current coursebook. Students can take the full course of schedule. They could take two courses through the Virtual Academy. Parents and guardians will register their student with the neighborhood school and will complete the enrollment form. That will then trigger a contact from someone, the local education guide, to sit down and talk about the student's educational pathway and what courses they would be accessing.
So if I'm a high school student and the sports marketing class looks cool to me, and I'd like to take that, how will that fit in with my day? So will we be using our, you know, current guidance counselors, working with the student, then, to ensure, like, when they take that course? Or how will that look for, you know, a student who's potentially in high school who has, you know, different hours each day?
Yep. So if a high school student, say, was enrolled in six courses and had a study hall and was like, I really want that sports marketing class, then they would see their guidance counselor and who would connect them at the high school with Rachel Baronic, who is our local education guide, and she would work with them to enroll in that class. So where would the student go? So let's say that's period three of their day is their study hall. They could take that class during period three of their study hall or period three of their day, and instead of being off-campus, they may go to their newly-designed library where they will be able to sign in, sit down, and take their class while they're in that great environment.
So what about the senior who may only have two classes that they need to take here? Core classes, so I have no idea, English and Math or something. So if they wanted to take, then, the rest of their courses online, we would allow that?
Allow that.
And, okay.
And that particular student would make arrangements in the office if they wanted to leave after... If their classes were period one, period two, and then they were going to take three virtual classes at home, they could make that arrangement with the high school office.
But if they wanted to stay in school all day, they could?
Yep.
Okay.
But we also... If a student has seven full hours, they don't have a free period, they can't go home and then take two classes virtually because they've already filled their day?
Correct. We're not doing student overloads, so they'll stick with the seven periods of the day rather than extend the day further.
And then I just wanted to bring up the point again that those are West Bend students that can now participate in West Bend sports teams or band or orchestra or clubs or extracurriculars, dances. I think that's awesome.
Yeah. They'll be a West Bend student, so that's all accessible to them.
For a student who wants to go full-time Virtual Academy, can they do that at night? I mean, is it possible to have a job during the day and then do schooling at night and on the weekends? Or does the program say, no, it's really got to be between normal... What would be normal school hours?
So they would be able to access it. There are some specific lessons that they'd have to be live... That are live. So they would have to report in for those live lessons with... Now, some of them will be recorded, and they could watch that later. Some, it's just because of the nature of the lesson, you need to be there for it. And they would know that on a week-by-week basis. I just want... Would it be monthly? But for sure, on a week-by-week basis, they would know that. So we have a specific email established that'll go out to families later this week. There's a specific email established for the Virtual Academy, and the website will be up later this week as well. Pending approval tonight of the vendor because some of the information is tailored to them.
Okay. I have a comment and a question. It's great that we are taking it to the next level and offering this Virtual Academy. I'll just do some high-level math. I know we're sending out a survey on all the parents, but with COVID and high risks, say there's five to 10% of students that might seriously consider this because of their high risk themselves or their parents, and then the teachers we have to worry about, too, maybe five to... I'm just high-leveling it here. So we're going to have some interest here from emails we've received and comments we received. So it's great that we're ahead of the game, so that's a comment for everyone out there that we're seriously considering, I mean, everyone in the community and how to educate everyone. I do have a question on the teachers. So we might have, right, 20 to 40 teachers in a high-risk category. Can we consider them to be our first choice? Because I bet you there's going to be from grade school all the way up into high school, there's going to be teachers available. And I think our quality of teachers, if they're trained on the Edentum system, could be better than somebody in Texas or California, and they would know our system. So would they be given preference, is the question?
So we have a process for... Within our HR department already for staff transfers, and we are looking at that current process. So what would put you before me in consideration? We have a process for that. So we'll work within those established parameters already. And... But would our teacher... Would... So if we have 10%, so let's say we have 600 kids, I'm going to be looking for some of our staff to be the staff that teach that. And then how we decide will depend partially on if all 600 of those are at the elementary level or which wouldn't... From what I see, that is what... I don't expect that at all. But, you know, that would require a different licensure. And so we'll work within that, but the processes that are already in place will be the base for how we move forward. Does that make sense? So requesting transfers and things like that?
Yeah. So I understand there's got to be a process. But we will be looking at trying to match our best fits. Obviously, is that basically what you're saying?
What would I say is, yeah.
You have a process in place, so, okay.
Yep, best fit.
That covers some... One of my concerns.
Did you want to comment on that?
I was just going to say, because it's not just about, as we were saying, what teachers want or need, and we want to honor that, but an AP physics teacher, maybe not my best kindergarten teacher, not even licensed to do it, and vice versa. So again, that's the process you're speaking of where it's taking into account licensure, expertise. Because we know whether we're virtual, in-person, the number-one thing we can do is put our amazing teachers in front of kids with whatever format, so that's what we'll try and design to do.
I already talked about some of the things in place to ensure student safety online. There is a digital citizenship component of the virtual school as well as our bricks-and-mortar school, so students will have access to and will be expected to participate in the digital citizenship components. And I spoke about the LMS and the vetted content already in the LMS. Edmentum is COPA compliant as well as FERPA compliant. And then we have our data privacy agreement. We have shared that with Edmentum, and we will be closing that out, given approval of them as a vendor. We will move forward with that, with closing out the data privacy agreement with them, then. Cost per student. So what is displayed on the screen is the most expensive cost per student for a partnership with Edmentum, and the cost does go down in... Immediately off the bat, in two different ways. One, based on the payment schedule we determine. If we have... Based on when we pay our bill, the cost could go down as much as $400 per student at the elementary level and $250 at the 612 level. And so that could be a significant savings if we're... Depending on when we pay the bill. The next part is if we have a... If we're providing the teacher, then, again, the cost goes down because we're just paying, then, for content and use of the LMS because we're providing the teacher. They will provide the support and the training for the teacher.
Laura, can I ask about that just a bit? So if we... So if we do supply a teacher, they supply the platform, basically. We have the students. Would they just be teaching our population of students? Okay, so it's not like they would be, oh, we're teaching third-grade math, and there could be 100 children in that... Right. Okay, so it would just be ours?
No, they would just be ours, teach ours, then.
Thank you.
And then the West Bend teacher would be teaching the Edmentum...
Curriculum.
Curriculum, not what they would be teaching if they were in the building here.
That's correct.
And Laura, on the early payment discount, if you will, what happens if a student decides a couple weeks in and, you know, halfway through the semester that, you know, this just isn't working for me, I'm going back into the traditional classroom setting? Is it prorated at that point? Or are we... We're paying, we get that discount for the 10 heads that we've got, and that's that regardless of...
Yep. So if we've already paid our bill, then we level up at the end of the year. And so we'll... My expectation is that this is not a one-year partnership, that we're going to continue this because I think it is a very high-quality product and a very good partnership for the school district. So I don't expect to be changing year to year. That we would... When we level up at the end of the year, we would also be talking about the following year. So kind of the same process. If we pay by a certain time, we would have a reduced rate. I will look with Andy and Superintendent with... I'm sorry. With Andy Sarno and Superintendent Wimmer to see if that's in the best interest of the district to roll it forward.
But just to follow up, just as a random example, so if we have a student who is enrolled and halfway through the school year, their family moves to Australia, and they are... So they're going to withdraw from this. Do we pay for an entire slot, a 50% slot, or how does that work?
So at that point, we have the... An open slot that we already paid for because it would be paid for by that point, by semester. And at that time, we see if we have other students that are desiring to roll in, or we would... What we would do is we would wait till the end of the year to level up because if we have more coming in...
Can I speak to enrollment as well? So there's already a process in place for students who might move during the year, and we are allowed tuition waivers and different access. So if kids and families find that they need to move, this actually could provide stability for them in that they can remain enrolled with us and stay with us through a tuition-waiver process. So there's different opportunities there where we can actually hang on to our kids, they can have the stability they need as they might change homes, et cetera.
This slide just highlights the dates and times of parent meetings. Parents at the end of the year and some as recently as yesterday filled out a form just requesting more information. If they did that, they received this information already, given approval by the school board, and they were... That was... That's part of the information. Given approval by you tonight of the vendor. This will go live on the website later this week and then be sent out to all families.
So I envision some high school kids really enjoying this opportunity, be able to take some additional courses. So will the course... Will all the courses be listed on our website? So I mean, maybe I don't... Maybe I want to see what the courses are before I even decide if I want to go to a meeting. So will that be available?
So we will have the course booklet on the website. In the current format, I don't think it's as parent-friendly as it could be. So if that is ready on Wednesday, that will be listed. Otherwise, it'll be just stated that it is to be shared shortly.
Okay.
But if it... In the current format, it's not as parent-friendly as I would like.
So Laura, looking back to the agenda from the June 15th meeting and the conversation we had around expanding our virtual offering to be K-6, was I incorrect in assuming that WVS was going to be the player in that expanded relationship?
Yeah. Because WVS does not go down to elementary.
Okay.
But at that time, we were still in conversation, and we were still exploring the full program of several vendors.
Okay.
And to be honest, we originally had thought we would use a different vendor, not because this one wasn't an outstanding choice. This is actually probably, for our district and our students, a much better option. But there were other factors that we were considering, and this one ended up being a much better option, which is why it's the one that's being brought forward.
Okay.
But with WVS, will still be that option for those kids who have been in there right now.
Right. And I guess what...
It does go down to elementary.
The net of my concern is this is... This is obviously an exciting offering. It's, I'll say, a significant change in terms of strategic delivery of education. And it's the first time the board is being presented with this name of Edmentum. And I asked the president before the meeting, you know, how many times have we been presented with a topic for the first time and taken formal action on it in the same meeting? And I realize that timing is of the utmost importance here, in part because of the summer calendar, in part because of COVID. But I guess, Erin, from a curriculum committee perspective, can you share with us your feedback? I did go out and look at Edmentum's site this morning. I see Sheboygan Falls, I see Menominee Falls, our case-study sites. Have we talked to anybody in those locations? Superintendent, with your relationship with Superintendent Hurdrich, have you talked with some folks in the falls? And I just want to make sure that if we have to act on this tonight, that we're doing something that is truly in the best interest and despite the short notice, that's going to be a good thing for the district.
I did not... Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
We looked at this during the curriculum meeting last week. This was the only vendor that we saw was presented to us, much like it is tonight from Laura. I think we were excited about the opportunities available, the different classes offered, and then the ability to kind of mix and match for those students that want maybe a mix or a variety of those things that they can't get in person. And then the opportunity that they're still West Bend students. I think that... West Bend students, I think that sums up what we were really looking at.
I can speak to some pieces too. I think once you go through making sure it's a rigorous academic option, and it has, and meets all the tenants that we need in that, we had to be very judicious in selection of a partner, because, as you know, during this time, everyone's kind of quick out of the gate. And we did not want to be faced with an over-promise, under-deliver from a vendor. So, we were looking for those assurances. When you look at contracts, so in my former experience, we had a robust K-12 virtual option that we had built over time. And certainly in vetting contracts, looking for that, you want to make sure that we have the ownership that we need, that we're just buying into the platform, that we still have local decision-making. I'm not, it's not an evergreen contract in that I'm locked into something over time, that it's a gradual release of responsibility as we build our platform, and it gave us those pieces. So, not only is it robust in its instructional offerings, but for me, it met the needs around contracts that I look for, that I'm sure that Andy looks for, that we look for as a team, that they were most poised. Again, in our conversations as superintendents, everyone's kind of looking for that. They have, as we said, accredited. I need the accreditation in those pieces, because that allows students to have doors open to them versus closed. If I don't have the appropriate accreditation, that's impacting transcripts, that's impacting eligibility for D1 athletics at universities, et cetera. So, we're making sure that what we're providing creates pathways for kids, that all doors remain open, maybe even some new ones. And it's meeting the tenants of contracts in addition to that. So, again, when we talk with other superintendents, and had experience the other way, where, you know, it wasn't the right partner. So, I think we were very cautious in connecting with others and what's everyone doing. And I believe Cedarburg's moving forward with this. You see more, because to us at the table, it wasn't an over-promise, it wasn't a sales job. It was they're really delivering and gave us, as we said, the best thing we can do is put our staff in front of our kids, and it gave us that open door to do it as well. So, I'm really confident in this election and recommendation.
I have a question on that. You brought up contracts, and obviously, we wouldn't want to be changing vendors frequently. But what is, what is the term on the contracts?
It's year-to-year. So-
Okay.
We would be signing up for this year, and then more in spring be talking about the next year. And we're not locked into any long-term relationship. And it's very much a, very much a mutual relationship for both. If we were to be awful partners and just horrible to work with, and changing things constantly, it does give them an out too. I did not speak with Menominee Falls or Sheboygan Falls. However, I did speak with other Wisconsin districts, and some of us, some of it was during a, so it was all curriculum directors from this area and then from another area. So, the one in particular that stands out as their voice during my questions on both of those calls was one from Hartford.
Okay. And Superintendent, I appreciate your comment about, you know, being quick out of the gate in this current climate. Everybody's got an answer, because this is the hot thing in demand, and, you know, the case study there is Zoom. Well, great tool, you know, just rife with, with privacy issues. So, can you give us a little bit of pedigree of this organization? Again, looking at their website, I don't want to say it was, you know, a bunch of schmooze, but they've been doing this for 50 years. And that's not 10 years times five people. This is 50 years that they claim. So, can you put a little color around that?
So, the individual that's, I'm working with on educational solutions, to speak about their background, they had been a teacher, they had been a principal, and then they were in charge of developing a virtual program for their district. They are also a PhD in educational technology. And so, they're, it's not that they pulled someone from another field. These are educators who have built this program. And this is previously, it is, Edmentum is pulling Calvert and Ed Options together. They had been separate organizations previously.
Are they owned by Edmentum now? Okay. And then my last question, I promise. The pricing that we see here, is this our negotiated pricing? Or I see that Edmentum is on the CISA procurement site for the state. Does that, is that where this pricing comes from, or is there perhaps better pricing available?
I will double-check that. We do have, like I said, the, some reductions potentially, but I'll double-check the procurement rate. I did not check that.
I want to make sure I understand the cost per student. This slide here, we typically talk about a normal K-5 student as being around $6,800 cost per student in West Bend. So, if a kid is, let's say, half and half, are we still $6,800 plus $3,000? Now, that's a $9,800 student? Or does that 68, does that become reduced, because now they're taking this?
So, the student wouldn't be a $3,000 student in this program, because they would be on a reduced schedule. So, that's 3,000 full-time, full-year.
Yep.
And so, that would be reduced based on the number of classes and courses that the student is taking. Conversely, in the in-house, the student would be accessing less services. It does not necessarily mean a reduction in staff, or a pulling of a staff member from the West Bend Bricks and Mortar School to the West Bend Virtual Academy for that one student. That broader savings comes in.
Sure. You'd have to see a lot of enrollment for that to happen. Let's say, and I don't do math in public, let's say 5% or 10% of our students are involved in this program in some form or fashion. Some are taking one or two courses, some are full-time. Is this going to be, is this an added cost to our district? Or is this a wash because of some of those services at the Bricks and Mortar are reduced, and we're paying over here?
Ultimately, it depends on that balance, but it more than likely will be a wash. It may not be this first year.
Mm-hmm.
And you think of reducing transportation routes, doing things like that. There's all sorts of, not just the instructional costs, but other organizational costs that, again, you would see.
And certainly, if we can recapture or pull in a student who is open and rolling out, that would be a huge win if we could recapture several dozens of those, hundreds of those students.
I have that list that was delivered to my desk today, and I'll be reaching out personally to families so that they're aware that we've built this option and how robust it is. So, that if they had previously went out because we did not have that, I want them to know that it's here. It's on their doorstep. They can engage with neighborhood kids. They can be part of that school community, as Erin was talking about, dances, sports, athletics, plus a virtual option, which they probably don't have right now in that. So, I'll be making those contacts personally.
Great. Thanks for your due diligence on this, and it's exciting. I hope it's exciting for our parents and students and community.
I actually see some people in our community seeing the price tag and thinking, oh, what do you do with all that extra money? Well, until this is underway, and we have a steady number of students enrolled in the Virtual Academy, and therefore can shift around teachers, whether they switch to becoming Virtual Academy teachers or fill a different role, the cost savings is not going to happen right off the bat. And if anything, there might be a little investment, I would assume. But-
Depends on the threshold of how many.
Yeah, exactly. But I think in the long run, this is the best choice, and, you know, we're not sitting here because we're doing the easy stuff.
One more question.
One more.
So, if I have a child that's, say, first to eighth grade, or even in the high school, to the extent that we have the requirement, and I want, they want to go full-time into this, how do they address their FIAID requirement?
So, the, we currently actually, in the district, offer virtual FIAID at the high school level. It's in the course book and has been for a number of years. And that's done through, including, like, in summer school right now, is virtual FIAID. So, the student has activity logs and things that they're tracking. And depending on the type of course, some of the FIAID has some research into, you know, if it's lifetime fitness, what are fitness activities, and what are the gains behind that at that upper level? At that lower level, it, again, that at-home mentor is going to be important, because that student is going to be doing some exercising, some locomotion, other things like that that are part of that first grade program or that kindergarten program. That local, that at-home mentor is going to be important in making sure that, you know, what are you doing, some skills and strategies with bouncing the ball, and, and some of that locomotion activity, that they are safe and in an environment that is conducive to that and not bouncing it off the-
The newest cottage industry, at-home mentorship.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One thing that I just wanted to point out, I was going to mention early, at your earlier question, and I skipped over it. One of the other components that I really appreciated about the Edmentum process was for our teachers, if we are going to have some of our West Bend teachers be the teachers in this program, the partnership and the training that Edmentum provides for the platform, for the instructional philosophy, and for the mentor through the year, for that teacher to become a virtually certified teacher, it's a very robust and supportive process that is not overwhelming.
I will move to approve the partnership with Edmentum and the West Bend Joint School District Number One for a virtual educational program.
Second.
The motion in second to approve the partnership with Edmentum and the West Bend Joint School District for a virtual educational program. Applause for any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Laura.
Yes, Laura, thank you for your work. And thanks to our new curriculum committee for taking a sneak peek at this for us. Appreciate it very much.
So, I know that the nursing program is up, but I'm still staying here, because there's something sunny agenda first.
That's right. The next item on our agenda, then, is a second reading of a number of board policies. 171.1, Public Notice of Board Meetings, 521, Social Networking Technology, 522.7, Staff Use of Information Technology and Communication Resources. So, Laura, I will turn it over to you. And these are, this is a second reading. So, we are able to, with, if I remember right, with unanimous approval, we would be able to take action if we so desire. If we don't have unanimous action or do not want to take action, it would go to a third reading.
Correct.
Please take it away.
Are there any, we had quite a bit of discussion when we were still virtual on the Board Policy 171. Are there any further questions at this time on that policy?
I move to approve revised Board Policy 171.1, Public Notice of Board Meetings.
Second.
Motion in second to approve revised Board Policy 171.1, Public Notice of Board Meetings. Any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Okay.
All right.
So, Policy 521, which is social networking and technology, there are some revisions to that policy. Are there any questions that have arisen in the interim since our last discussion?
I will move to approve revised Board Policy 521, Social Networking and Technology.
Second.
Motion in second to approve Policy 521, Social Networking Technology. Any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carries. The next one would be 522.7, Staff Use of Information Technology and Communication Resources, correct?
Any questions on that policy?
I would move to approve revised Board Policy 522.7, Staff Use of Information Technology and Communication Resources. Motion in second to approve revised Board Policy 522.7. Any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, the motion carries. Thank you again, Laura. The next item then on our agenda is the Annual Nursing Report. And I think we have Sharon or Amy or both of you to, all right.
Surely a nurse, come on.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amy Brager. I'm the district nurse. I am going into my sixth year here at the district and fourth in this position. Prior to that and alongside of that, I worked for eight years at Children's Hospital of Wisconsin, primarily in pediatric trauma and pediatric intensive care. So, I am no stranger to wearing a mask all day. As for the rest of my team, there are healthroom professionals in every site K through 12. That's a mix of registered nurses, LPNs, and medical assistants. We also have some part-time support nurses that work filling in for any sick calls, field trip needs, or really any other tasks that need support at that point. This is just our framework or in the model that we use from the National Association of School Nurses, with the students being the center focus, and then pieces of care coordination and education and community networking that we can utilize for our practice. This is our report of the health conditions and office visits and things from last, this last school year. So, we see a variety of health conditions and a very, very large level of needs and interventions for our students with those conditions. This stuff listed here is really what we see the most of, I would say, where we have 585 students with asthma that carry, the large majority of them carry inhalers or have them in the clinics. We have 27 students with type 1 diabetes. Those students can range anywhere from one to six scheduled visits a day in our, in our clinics, depending on their journey with diabetes. We have 221 emergency medications, and that can be anything from EpiPens for anaphylaxis, our Glucagon for said students with diabetes, and then Diastat for our students with seizure disorders. We have 1,418 students with mental health or behavioral health disorders that are diagnosed. A large majority of those students have attention deficit disorder-type illness. So, that would be something that they would come to the clinic once or twice a day for medication to help them be successful at school. And then, a large part of what I do is consultation for IEP and 504 needs. So, if a student has a medical condition that they need accommodations during their school day, or to help them be successful, I will help to be that liaison between their educational needs and their medical provider, whatever that looks like, to help them throughout their day.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity. So, are all students who are on any kind of prescription medication that they may take during the day enrolled, or is that optional? Is it required, or is it optional?
It depends on what time their medication needs to be taken. So, we always encourage students to take their medication at home, just to kind of keep the amount of medication at school, and trips to the clinic, try to keep those things down. But if a student that's taking it for ADHD, for example, they might need to take that with food, and it might coincide with a medication that they take in the morning, and then they have, like, a booster at lunchtime. So, that's a large portion of what we see is that booster need.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, those IEP and 504 meetings, I attended 84 of those from that, that period of time, from August through March. Last school year, from that six months we were in session, we saw 43,648 clinic visits throughout the, all of the K through 12 sites. Just as a comparison there for a, for a normal in-session school year, that we were at 56,000 from the previous year. Of those clinic dispositions, we had 3,760 students sent home ill. So, that was based off of a nurse's decision, based off their assessment findings, that they should go home. The rest of them were turned to school, or returned to class safely. 13 calls, transport to the hospital via 911. And then, with our medications, we had 951 meds stored. That's a combination of those scheduled meds that we talked about, and also as-needed medications for, you know, headache, ibuprofen-type situation. So, we were able to provide quite a bit of training and certification in our short amount of time. We did our medication AED training for all of our staff, our CPR. We have some amazing CPR instructors on our team who were able to certify 80 staff members. We did our Project Adam accreditation drills, and this year, we were able to beef that up a little bit and include students in that involvement, and kind of help them to see what resources they have and how they would- and how they would react and respond in an emergency, which was a lot of fun for both, I think. Children's Hospital came out to do an asthma and allergy education for all of our health staff. We provided the UAP, or Unlicensed Assistive Personnel Training, for 30 staff members and coaches. That is largely for our students with diabetes. So insulin administration and carb counting and all of those things. In the event that a nurse is absent from the building, we'd like to have our additional staff trained to be able to provide those services. But it could be something procedural as well, like a urinary tract catheterization or a tube feeding or something of that nature. And then we really focused in on the dangers of vaping and providing that education to our students in our community last school year. We were able to educate our students at each level. For example, our Badger students received education from the Concordia University Nurses, Nurse Practitioners Group to make sure that they were receiving that education. And then we had the honor of having Dr. Luella Amos from Children's Wisconsin come out and present to our community. She is, she was actually just named Woman of Influence by Milwaukee Business Journal. And she is an outstanding resource for our community. She's a pulmonologist. And she brought one of her patients, who was a success story, was a high school student that was not too far from us, who was able to share his story for the very first time in front of an audience. So we were very moved by that presentation. Some of our school-based health initiatives and community partnerships that we were able to conduct last year. We had our vision screenings with the West Bend Lions Club. 353 kindergartners were screened, and we were able to find 36 of those students that required glasses and get them connected with the people they needed to get for those items. Bridging Brighter Smiles Dental Program has been amazing. They actually come into the schools and provide students with sealants, fluoride treatments, cleanings, and just if they're unable to get those transportation, the transportation they need. And they provided $11,000 worth of charitable care last year in our buildings. We had our district-wide flu and immunization prevention education notification pieces. We're part of various committees, so to, to note, the Heroine Task Force Committee, the West Bend School District and Community Suicide Prevention Team, the Washington Ozaki Coalition for Sexual Wellness. We became very, very good friends, if we weren't already good friends, with our Washington Ozaki Public Health Department. And we really improved upon our safety and communicable disease procedures with them. Always a pleasure working with the West Bend Police and Fire on our emergency response and safety procedures as well. We provide clinical experience for the BSN nursing students through Marion University every year. And then last year, we reached a district immunization compliance of 99.6%, which means we do not need to exclude children from school this, this coming fall. Obviously, we stopped school in person, March 13th. So nurses don't like to sit down. That's, I don't know if you know that, but we like to be very, very busy. So during our closure time, we were partnering with the Washington Ozaki Health Department, assisting in a lot of that district planning and communication, and we will continue to do so and be that resource. We helped to gather and facilitate belongings pickups, pickup for families. So a lot of our healthroom professionals were right in there with all their site staff, helping to clean out lockers and call families and make plans for transportation of, of belongings. As I mentioned, we had about 900-some medications that needed to be picked up. So making all of those plans to get those medications back to their families quickly. I know a lot of people on my team made home visits for those that couldn't come get their meds. We coordinated and participated in virtual IEP and 504 meetings. And, I mean, it was a personal goal for me to expand my techno, technology use at the beginning of this school year. I really got an opportunity to do that. So that's, that's a silver lining, if you will. We attended DPI, DHS, Children's Wisconsin, CISA webinars to gather the most updated research and evidence-based practice. And one of the best opportunities, I would say, is to see how amazing it was for all the school nurses, locally, the school nurses in the state, and even internationally. We all have been working so well together to really help share resources and find out, because we've, you know, we've never done this before. So figure out what's going to be best and, and try to meet the needs of our, of our communities as a whole. I was on Google conferences from nurses, from school nurses in Switzerland and Japan and nations that have already opened up school and what they're seeing. And I think you mentioned that earlier, and it's just a really cool opportunity at that point to, to be able to do that. So lastly, one of the things that we've been working on as a whole in the Pupil Services Department is, is identifying some of our students that, based off of their health conditions or potential health conditions of their family members, identifying what, a list of people that we want to connect with individually. We know that they have a medical condition or a need, and just making sure that they are having, they're, they know what their options are and that they have that opportunity to ask us questions at that point. So we will be connecting personally with all of those families in the next couple of weeks. Any questions?
Any questions? Fantastic report.
Very good.
Thank you for all the work that you, that you do and that we're going to be calling on you to do this year, so.
I have a question.
Question?
Cleaning of the school and routines for that, will you be helping put the plan together for that?
I'd like to. We meet tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are on to committee reports and the curriculum committee. So Erin, I, I know we talked about a couple of things already on today's agenda that we're talking about the curriculum committee. May you give us an update?
So the curriculum committee met last week, and I'm going to kind of fast forward through a couple of the topics because they were in the action items today. The annual notice of academic standards we touched on, as well as the virtual academy option. So the thing I just wanted to point out a little bit more, because it'll be coming before us in the upcoming months, is the social studies revisions. There were new standards adopted by the board last year, and there's some new resources that need to be used. And the social studies team is working on figuring that out. And they had met previously, pre-COVID, and then kind of paused, and now it needs to regroup and revisit that and what that looks like. So it's mostly the middle level and high school curriculum, looking for new resources to teach those classes.
Great. Any questions for Erin? Thank you to Erin and Tony and Nancy for serving on the curriculum committee. Appreciate it. All right. We already covered the superintendent's report, so that would take us to item eight. That's right. Any, any, any final remarks? For the night. All right. Which takes us to future agenda items and the board meeting calendar, which was in your packet. Next four board meetings, we have one on August 3rd, August 17th, September 14th. All as regular board meetings, as well as our annual meeting will be upcoming on September 28th. All right. Are there any other final items to come before the board?
I have a question for Superintendent. I'm going to put you on the spot here, sorry. What have we heard about athletics in the fall? Anything?
The WIAA.
If you don't have an answer, then you can get back to me, but sorry.
So the WIAA would be the governing body around athletics for the state, and they've been very supportive in allowing local control around things. What they did was they gave districts flexibility in convening teams. So there's all sorts of rules around convening teams. And, you know, we think about athlete safety and being off for six months and all of that. So right now, they're allowing us to get very small groups together, almost a small launch outside of their season. So they've allowed that. And right now, they're, they're continuing to give guidelines, but we didn't see any large-scale transformation when you study sports around, like the state of Ohio, where they completely flipped the entire season around, so that you were launching with baseball, tennis, you know. So they have not made any moves like that. But we continue to advocate around how students can have safe opportunities, what those opportunities look like. We know that, you know, wrestling and football, like high-contact sports aren't going to be options we want to lead with. So our athletic directors are part of our conference, then part of that larger group. And then superintendents have had a hand and a voice in, in talking about that as well. But we did start small group athletics to welcome back athletes, more a focus on getting them back conditioned so that participation wouldn't lead to injury and that connection.
So how much jurisdiction does WIAA have in that, in this whole consideration of athletics?
So they can kind of reset that schedule a lot of, there's some local control as far as the different conferences. But when you look at state tournaments, things like that, they're providing that overview. They're also providing, as I said, the conditions in which we can convene teams, et cetera. But I know our athletic directors have a strong voice in not just their conference, but the larger organization. So they continue to advocate for safe sports in whatever venue that they can.
And fall sports typically begin practicing in early August. So that's obviously several weeks ahead of the first day of school. Do we have any anticipation of how that's going to look?
So I can, I can show you that schedule. So those teams have been allowed to convene early to start that conditioning process. So a lot of our teams are in session in very small groups. We worked with Amy, our district nurse, on that, as well as public health, to make sure our plan was not just following those guidelines, but our local public health guidance, as well as our, our district nurse and our trainers also were critical in that piece. So they've already convened and started outside that window. But again, what play is going to look like, we're still in-house only. And we said we would have points of time where we would revisit decisions. So right now, it's small group all the way through the end of July. And then we'll reconvene and understand, are there new guidelines from them? Are there local decisions we need to make? So that's kind of where we're at in holding until the end of July.
Any other items to come before the board? I'll just briefly thank, there are a number of individuals in the community that sent us emails. And I hope I'm not out of line by saying that we as a board appreciate receiving those because those help give us a broader perspective on some really complex issues. So thank you for those. With that, since there's nothing else, I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.